Looks like we're at nine o'clock for our regular Board of Supervisors meeting here on August 6th. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with a moment of silence. Supervisor Green, I think you said you had one. Does anyone else have one as well, just in case?
Thank you. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Brian Benavides, 58 years old. He passed away July 31 at our Hamilton Emergency Shelter after a medical emergency. And we want to thank shelter staff and other residents there for being there during a difficult time, and also to our first responders.
Thank you. And I have one as well. I'd like to offer a moment of silence to Lawson David Beck. He leaves behind his wife, Quetta Beck, as he passed. He actually passed on Friday, May 24, 2024. But his celebration of life will be this Sunday on his heavenly birthday at the Nice Community Baptist Church. He leaves behind his wife, Quetta, the mother to Mark Wayne Allison of Nice, and Juanita Allison, both Upper Lake High School alumni. He was baptized also at Nice Community Baptist Church by Pastor Rich Robert of Nice Community Baptist Church. And again, his celebration of life will be this Sunday following the memorial service. Chief Rasmussen, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're on item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Is there anyone that has one? No?
No.
All right. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items can be pulled by the Board of Supervisors or any community member or citizen that would like to discuss it further. They're usually non-controversial, however, at times can be pulled. So is there anyone on the board that wants to pull a consent agenda item? Supervisor Sabatier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item 512.
Item 5.12 pulled. Is there any others?
We would like to pull 5.8.
5.8. All right. So we have 5.8, 5.12. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone?
Vice Chair, it would be, we would like to include 5.19 as well.
Okay, 5.19. So 5.8, 5.19. Let's see. Let me just mark it. So I got it. All right, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public in the chambers that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda items? Anyone from Zoom? All right. Hearing and seeing nothing, we'll go ahead and move forward to action. Bringing it back to the board, closing public input.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.21, with the exceptions of 5.8, 5.12, and 5.19.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. With that, we'll move on to 6.1, our timed items. Well, our timed items, and our first one is 6.1, public input. I do have two here. Go ahead and start with supervisor, previous supervisor Jeff Smith. Come on up.
Thank you, board. Couple of things. The first thing is, I really want to thank the road department and our new road department head, and especially the street sweeper guy that has spent almost a week up on our streets after we talked to you guys two or three weeks ago. We just met this morning, another half hour meeting to get our issues resolved. And I really appreciate the effort, finally, that we have gotten to get some things done. The second thing I wanted to talk about was, EJ, I really wish you would follow through and return phone calls like a board member should. You called me on a Friday in January, and I returned the call. We spoke for 18 minutes that following Monday. That was about the middle of January. You told me, I'll get back to you by the end of the week, and if not the end of the week, by the end of the month. And I guess I should have asked what year that was going to be, because, you know, it's a little ridiculous over the last five years, seeing now that I'm in your district, and I try to follow through and get communication. And the biggest communication was this road deal. If we hadn't have been, if we hadn't come ourselves as a community before the board, we'd still be sitting and waiting to get something done. So please follow through. You should return every phone call, whether it's good news or bad news. Return the calls. My neighbor's gone through the same thing that's here, but you're returning his phone calls. Please do so. It's a common courtesy, whether it's bad news or not, at least return the call. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Fletcher, please come up.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is informational. I'm not asking the board to do anything. I have requested that my supervisor provide me with assistance in expediting a code complaint that I filed on Friday. As you know, we now have Measure U, and so Save Kelseyville is a political committee, and that political committee printed and distributed signs labeled Save Kelseyville. Those are not freedom of expression. Anyone can put up a handwritten sign saying Save Kelseyville, but a sign that says safecalseyville.com is a political sign. So I'm asking first that code enforcement determine that those signs are political. Secondly, political signs come under subsection X, which says, well, first, it does not mention the size of a sign. So a sign, in my opinion, could be anything from a postcard to a 100-foot billboard. If they wanted to exclude flyers and the odd signs, they could have done so. All the other regulations specify maximum sizes. Nothing specifies a minimum size, which would make it a political sign. Thirdly, since it is a political sign, they are not allowed to be displayed until August the 7th. So those dozens of Save Kelseyville signs are today code violations. So I'm asking that action be taken today to request of the person responsible, namely the Save Kelseyville Committee, that they take down those signs today. Maybe they can put them up tomorrow again, but I request that they be taken down today. And I think I've designated three signs, two at the residence of Mr. Mark Borgesino, and one larger sign opposite Kelseyville lumber. I know it's symbolic, just to tag those three signs, but it would make a symbolic point. Finally, since they are political signs, the people who put them up should be informed that they have to be taken down 10 days after the end of the election. So I urge you to, Mr. Crandall, and maybe one other, Mr. Green maybe, to consult with code enforcement and make sure that those determinations are made, namely, they are political signs. Small signs are not exempt. And secondly, to take action today on at least three of those signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public input in the room?
Yeah, we do have one more public input. Millie Simon.
All right, come on up.
Hi, I'm the county supervisor. I'm reading this for Wanda Quiddiquit. She wanted me to read this to you.
Close the microphone so we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, county supervisors, good morning. I just wanted to read this a little bit of paragraph from Wanda Quiddiquit. It was due to our Pomo statue, and she just wants to thank, I'll read it. Hello, my name is Wanda Quiddiquit. She couldn't be here today. I'm a member of the Tribal Advisory Committee to Lake County Museum. I am so happy to have this moment to present this small bronzed maquette of the Lake County family statue to you as preview what the life-size statue will look like. It will be momental when it is finally standing on the lawn of the Courthouse Museum. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for all you have done for this project. It will give a great meaning and presence to us, the meaning of presence to us and the indigenous Pomo people of Lake County, because they will represent our past, present, and future. And from my heart, I thank you, Board of Supervisors. So I guess the maquette is done, and someday they will bring it in. Well, Carolyn Burley will bring it and show it to you guys. So anyway, I just wanted to pass this note on for her, because she could not be here. But thank you for your time.
That's Millie Simon. I'll just state her name as she's walking back, right?
Yeah.
All right. Is there any other public input?
I'd like to read something.
Come on up.
Good morning. My name is Frances Ford. I live in Kelseyville. This is about the vetting process of the BGN. And it says here that all geographic name proposals forwarded from the BGN to the CAGN will be reviewed and researched to identify historical context, any association with discrimination and violence, geography relevance, and impacted stakeholders. I read that because a letter was sent to you. You've had it for since quite a while, and there's been a decision to take a ballot measure on. And I would ask you to rethink and rescind that because of the fact that paying $50,000 to find out what our county's about is not, not for me. I am about the change of the name. I know that there's racism in our courthouse, in our streets, everywhere we live. It's everywhere. So to pay for that understanding is an insult. It's an insult to you by not recognizing and writing this letter earlier. So that's all I think. I thank you for the statue also. Thanks for bringing that to the board this morning, and good day.
All right. Any other public input? Anything on Zoom?
No.
All right. And so I just wanted to state, Mr. Smith, there is a Central Region Town Hall next week on Monday, and I did mention last time you can attend those. And I'm sure you can relate, as I heard the numerous voicemails of frustrated constituents when my colleague and I started out, when I had to hear those on mine and on his voicemail. So I appreciate that, and I'll do my best to call back. All right. Let's see what we got next. It's 9:14, so we'll go ahead and move on to Pet of the Week. I see he's eager to come to the front.
Little bull in the china shop. Good morning, everybody. My name is Officer Murray. I'm with the Lake County Animal Care and Control. This morning, I have with me Sir. He is a two-year-old German Shepherd. One of my coworkers really, really loves this dog, so she wrote out a little passage for me to read for him today, because we are very hopeful that somebody falls in love with him like we all did. So this is Sir. He is a two-year-old German Shepherd. He's a complete love bug. He just wants to be a giant lapdog. He would do great in any type of home. He loves all people, kids, other dogs. He even knows a few commands like sit and twirl, although today he's a little bit, I think, nervous, because sit doesn't seem to be in his vocabulary. Sir would be happy to be your new hiking buddy or your resident couch potato. He loves treats, toys, baths, and his most favorite thing is being told how handsome he is. So if you know anyone, or if you are interested in coming down and meeting this amazing boy, or any of our other amazing animals, we're located at 4949 Hellbush Drive, and our phone number is 707-263-0278. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 6.3, Presentation of Proclamation Designating August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month. Supervisor Simon will be reading this proclamation.
Come on up. Good morning. Go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we'll talk a little bit about it. All right. Good morning. Proclamation designating August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month, where its Child Support Awareness Month underscores the critical importance of supporting families and connecting them with the vital resources they need to help their children grow and thrive. Whereas California's families span many diverse structures and backgrounds, and California Child Support Services works to connect families of all kinds of support to care for their children. While each family's needs are unique, the shared goal is ensuring every child is provided for and feels safe and loved. And whereas child support professionals are dedicated to assisting parents and legal guardians in providing consistent support for their children, and understand that one size does not fit all. From prioritizing payments to families over aid, recruitment, to utilizing enforcement actions that promote payment and family stability, the state is committed to finding solutions and meeting people where they are. And whereas during Child Support Awareness Month, we recognize the role of these efforts to secure shelter, safety, and support for the youngest Californians in bringing us closer to creating a California for all and forging a brighter future for the entire state. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby proclaim the month of August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month and encourages all Californians to recognize that by providing for all of California's children is one of the best investments our state can make. Passed and adopted the sixth day of August 2024, signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. All right. My name is Tammy Widener. I'm the Director of the Child Support Office. I would like to acknowledge my staff and thank all my staff for all their hard work and dedication to the child support program. The best way for us to educate the community about our services and how we provide them is through outreach and the events. Tracy Garcia is our supervisor in the department, and the last couple of months, she's taken over our outreach coordination, and I want her to tell you about it. It's great. She's very enthusiastic, so I'm very excited that she's in that role.
Morning, everyone. I'm Tracy Garcia. In honor of Child Support Awareness Month, please help yourself to a purple ribbon honoring Child Support Awareness Month. I'd also like to invite you, everyone, to come out to our office on Thursday, August 8th, between 9:00 and 12:00. We'll be having a little celebration, Cole Brevage's Games. We'll have literature prizes, case managers available to answer questions, open a child support case if you choose to do so. We'd also like you to look for us at the following community partner events. First off, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians Big Time Event, Saturday, August 24th, at 7:130, Red Hills Road in Kelseyville. This will be an all-day event, 10 to 10. Also, the Veterans Stand Down will be Wednesday, September 18th, 10 to 4, at Clear Lake American Legion, put on by Lake County Vet Connect. We'll also be at the National Night Out, Tuesday, October 1st, 4 to 7, downtown Lakeport, put on by Lakeport Police Department. And then Resilient Reentry is going to be Friday, October 11th, at the Lake County Woodland College in Clear Lake from 9:00 to 4, put on by the Lake County Probation. And then finally, Health and Wellness Fair is going to be Saturday, October 19th, from 10:00 to 2, at the Hobbiton Community Park in Lakeport, and that's put on by Sutter Health. Please also follow us on our Facebook page and scan our QR code if you'd like to have instant online access to child support services. Thank you all for your continued support and participation.
Open it up to the board for any comments. Thank you for this proclamation. It's really important to ensure that, oops, sorry about that, to ensure that children have options to be taken care of and that parents aren't left alone without this type of, you know, this advocacy and whatnot. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'd like to open it up to, or did you want to talk?
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, I was going to open it up to the public to see if anyone would like to come talk about Child Support Awareness Month. All right. Bring it back to the board and go ahead and take our picture. Bring it back to the board and go ahead and take our picture.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, item 6.4. Presentation of proclamation celebrating the retirement of Lakeport Police Chief Brad Rasmussen. And Supervisor Green will be conducting this proclamation.
No, she says no. We'll get another shot tonight. Well, I think this is false advertising because you are retiring from Lakeport Police, but you will be joining this board in January as an esteemed member of the Board of Supervisors. But let's start with the actual retirement part, and I want to do a shout out to City of Lakeport. You have two more paragraphs in your whereas's, so good job, city. Proclamation celebrating the retirement of Lakeport Police Chief Brad Rasmussen. Whereas Chief Brad Rasmussen has served with distinction for 35 years within the City of Lakeport Police Department, including 14 years as Chief of Police. And whereas he began his service in 1989 as a reserve officer and moved up through the ranks serving as a patrol officer, sergeant, and lieutenant before assuming the role of Chief of Police in 2010. And whereas throughout his tenure, Chief Rasmussen recognized the importance of connecting public safety and community well-being by addressing homelessness and mental health issues, advocating for community-oriented policing, and supporting community events such as National Night Out. And whereas he was a leader within the Lake County Law Enforcement Chiefs Association by leading collaborations between local, state, and federal agencies to bring critical and timely training and key programs to enhance public safety in Lake County. And whereas Chief Rasmussen's dedication, leadership, integrity, and deep respect for his community will be missed shortly and is deeply appreciated. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby celebrate the retirement of Lakeport Police Chief Brad Rasmussen and sincerely thanks him for his service to not only the City of Lakeport, but also the County of Lake, and wishes him much health and happiness for his retirement. Passed and adopted this sixth day of August 2024 and signed by the Chair.
Chief has to have some words. Let's do it, chief.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing my service in law enforcement in Lakeport and this county. Over the past three and a half decades, I've had the opportunity to work with countless county agencies, staff members, many, many board members over the years. And I've always enjoyed that partnership and always found that, you know, everybody that was out there, regardless of what agency they were in, really cared about making a difference in our community. So I've always appreciated that. And I'd also like to thank the public for their support over the years, and I look forward to continuing public service and working with this board next year. Thank you.
Anyone from the board?
I'll attempt. Chief, thank you for your dedication to the community. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Yeah. So we have been serving together on the Disaster Council for the last several years. I hope you take the next few months to rest up. And we really look forward to serving with you and having you up here on the dais with us.
I'd just like to thank you for the long-term service, and I'm on the Disaster Council also, but I know the disasters we've gone through. I know that you've done your part in the community. I just want to thank you for your long-term service. Yeah, and good luck on the board.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you for your service. Can't say it even more so than it's already been said, but your service is impeccable. And I'm sure you'll do a great job when you're sitting up here with us next year. So I'm looking forward to that. Go ahead to Russ Green.
I'll just brag on you a little bit more. It was a year and a half ago. We take this down with me and say, this is not personal about to run. Is this messing up? How about that? That's better. I have come to know you better over the years in your various roles, not just as Chief of Police, and a very capable leader and a thoughtful leader, just as the proclamation said, driving leadership on homelessness issues, understanding the interplay of mental health and policing. But also in this last year, I've come to appreciate your, as was stated in the city proclamation tonight, your volunteerism with other community groups. It is a very hard thing to do to keep momentum in small communities especially through volunteerism. And that stands out to me as much over this past year as anything else, not just a stellar law enforcement career and a very unusually thoughtful and compassionate approach to policing, but just how fully ingrained you are in this community and why people do love and respect you so much. And I think that's why they spoke by legions in the election and voted to put you up on this dais. So my personal appreciation, you've been a good police chief and also a good mentor to me. Thank you.
I still want to let it open for the public if anyone wants to come up and say anything.
Alan Fletcher. I want to thank you and your department for participating so vigorously in the visioning commission forums. You not only came yourself to at least one of the public forums, but you sent, I believe, your new police chief, and he was there every single meeting. Chief White from Clear Lake was there and the sheriff was conspicuously absent. So one more example of public participation. On the forum, I thought, I think we expected policing to be a number one hot issue, but in none of our forums did anybody stand up and complain about policing in the county or the towns. Thank you.
All right. Sheriff Hal.
Good morning, board. Lake County Sheriff Rob Hal. I just want to congratulate Brad on his retirement, as short-lived as it might be. Enjoy the next few months. I've had the pleasure of working with Brad for most of our entire careers. I believe we started about the same time, different departments, same business, got to work very closely together as partner agents of the Narcotic Task Force. Enjoyed that a lot. I've always known Brad to be an excellent cop, an excellent leader, an honest, strong family man, and he's going to do a great job at his next ventures. Congratulations, Brad.
Good morning, Mireia Turner, Community Development Director. I have been super fortunate to know Chief Rasmussen for at least the last 10 years. And I echo Supervisor Green's mentioning of how he serves as a mentor. You know, we've been through numerous disasters or emergencies, both community-wide and in my own personal little world. And throughout that, Chief Rasmussen is like oil on water, like nothing shocks him. And he's always about solving and working the problem and keeping people safe and benefiting this community, both in his professional as well as in his personal realm. And that level of calm and perspective and capability actually strengthens everybody that comes into contact with him. So very thankful. I'm not saying that just because you're going to be my new boss. So thank you.
Does anyone else want to come up? All right. There we go.
I had not planned to come up and say anything, but Brad, just to you, from me to you, I mean, we would have breakfast frequently throughout the course of my time here as the Lakeport Fire Chief, and you always was wise counsel. You always kept me from making bonehead decisions, I think. I mean, I probably made several bonehead decisions, but I know you always helped me with your guidance and leadership. But most importantly, I mean, your family and your children is a testament of who you are as a person, right? You know, I love what you've done with your family and how your children have excelled. And I look forward to participating and supporting you in your new role as supervisor. And again, we'll continue with the breakfast.
Sir, what was your name? Just for the record, just for the record, sorry. Yeah.
Jeff Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kevin Ingram, City Manager with the City of Lakeport. It was a real tough decision for us. You know, we've had Brad here for 35 years and it was tough to let him go and come over here to the county, but we figured we've been hogging him for 35 years, so it's only appropriate. No, in all honesty, Brad, it's been a huge honor. I've had the privilege to work directly with you day in and day out these past 10 years that I've been with the city. You're an incredible mentor. You mean a tremendous amount to us, and we're so excited that you're not leaving us completely and that we'll get to continue to work with you in your new capacity. But thank you for your visioning to the community. You've been doing community policing as the tenant of your being even before that name existed. And for that, the city is internally grateful to you. If you want to hear me speak more on that issue in the council, we'll be honoring Chief Rasmussen this evening. But thank you, Brad, for everything you've done for me personally and for the City of Lakeport.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll close it, bring it back to the board, and we'll do our picture.
Just last shout out. In addition to tonight's proclamation for Brad at Lakeport City Council, Dale Stobie will be sworn in as the next Police Chief of the City of Lakeport. So come on down for that, Dale. We appreciate you too. Just not quite as much as Brad yet.
So we're right on time for our 9:30 presentation on the Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium by Lake County Watershed Protection District staff. All right, Dr. Apadie, the floor is yours.
So Angela would be taking this presentation, giving us.
Oh, Angela, okay.
Can you hear me this morning, board?
Yes, we can.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I was trying to video in, but it says the host has stopped it, so hopefully you'll just be able to hear my voice today. And my name is Angela De Palma Dow. I'm Program Coordinator in Lake County Water Resources. And today, we're going to provide a brief update on the Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium. This event is happening next week, so I wanted to make sure, because it is a public event and the Watershed Protection District has coordinated this event, that we provide an update to the board and to the public. And I wanted to start off and thank the event sponsors and supporters. I believe there are some hard copy flyers in the board chambers. We also have this flyer on our website with all of our sponsors and financial supporters listed there. Also, the co-coordinator for this event with myself is Dr. Janine Pfeifer. Our event planner is Abby Lou Presents. Our amazing accountant in Water Resources that was able to add yet another tedious financial project to her docket, thank you, Jaclyn Stors. We also have a film as part of this event, and our magic movie maker, Sam Houston, is incredible in putting that together. And all the district staff that have helped plan this event and will be there to help on the event in real life, in real time. The purpose of this event is its history for research and management in Clear Lake. So it's a two-day symposium. It's going to cover all the latest developments in water quality monitoring, land and lake management, conservation, restoration activities in the Clear Lake watershed. And the last time we had a symposium dedicated to Clear Lake in Lake County was in 1997 and 1998. It was two days, but spread over two different years, and the covers of those symposiums proceedings I've provided here. So it's been a little bit. It's been about 25 years, actually, since we had a dedicated Clear Lake Science Symposium. And there's been a lot of changes to the lake, a lot of research and management that has occurred. And so we really wanted to have a comprehensive, publicly accessible event that would showcase all this work and identify the next steps going forward. And hopefully, we won't be waiting 25 years for the next one. That's my goal. So this event will be majorly in person in Upper Lake at Robinson Rancheria Conference Center, and we will have sessions there during the day, Thursday, Friday. We also have another off-site location for sessions, and that'll be the Bimetal's Upper Lake Meeting Hall, because we have so much science and so much research to cover that we had to have sessions at the same time in two different locations. And because tribal partners are so vital to everything that has occurred in the watershed and continues to occur, we wanted to make sure that we were able to incorporate two tribal locations in this event. In the evening, there's going to be poster session networking event Thursday evening at Robinson Rancheria, and that'll be 5:30 to 8:00. And then on Friday, the 16th, in the evening, we're going to bring it back to Lakeport for the Clear Lake Film and Science Slam. And this is a mini-science documentary, and I have a slide with a little more information on that in a bit. So briefly, some of the process that we put together for this, because it is a huge event, is we really needed to, well, we started with the idea, the concept was derived from a meeting during winter 2023 for Clear Lake Hitch. And this was at UC Davis, in Davis, with a variety of researchers, managers, and anybody that wanted to kind of figure out how we go forward on the Clear Lake Hitch. And one of the things that came out was that there isn't one place where all of the current science and research on the lake and the basin is put together. And in order to manage the hitch, which rely on tributaries and the lake, we had to have a spot for that. And so we really felt that the Watershed Protection District was the appropriate entity to put this on, to make sure that there was complete public access and awareness for this event. And also, as the local managing agency, it made sense for us to also host this. We had two planning events for the Science Symposium, one in November, one in April. And we also released a participation survey, so we wanted to make sure that researchers and managers were even interested in participating, and if they had current research and management that they were willing to share. So we did a survey to make sure that we had enough interest in order to put a bet on and to kind of gauge the level of involvement before we endeavored on this huge planning process. And then we did conduct some outreach to the community, especially through social media. We wanted to make sure that, you know, people wanted to be involved and also to maximize the resources from the community. So we did a call for wildlife photos and videos and let people know that we were doing a symposium and wanted to see what the public could provide as far as images about Clear Lake and Clear Lake watershed. And so that's what some of these images are here of the mountain lion and the bear. And then we also did a call for exhibitors and sponsors and volunteers. So this was after the second planning meeting. And this was because we wanted to make sure that we had this collaboration and accessibility. So exhibitors are going to have booths, they're going to provide info, networking materials. They also contributed a large amount to our swag bags. And these are companies, organizations, and partners that are doing work here in Clear Lake or with Clear Lake organizations and agencies. And so it was really important to be able to have ability for them to mingle with the public and with all the partners at this event. So sponsors, sometimes people maybe couldn't attend in person, but they wanted to support the event, or sometimes they wanted to provide some other sort of support. So sponsorships include in-kind. They also, sponsors are vital for providing financial resources for our reception, our snack breaks, and then, of course, our swag bag materials. And then we did a call for volunteers, so if anybody wants to be involved in volunteering at the So if anybody wants to be involved in volunteering at the event itself, we also released that call. And that is vital, too, because it's a big event, there's going to be stuff that comes up that we're going to need help with, and our little district staff is going to be there. But it's great to have more engaged and excited volunteers to help. So this is the schedule of the event. It is very small, and I'm not going to go in detail for everything. I really encourage anybody to check out our website and on our, the Water Resource Department website, this schedule is posted there as an image. You can also download it as a PDF. But you can see where we have our breaks, we have our keynote speakers, and we have the sessions and the sessions topics. And again, it's really small, I'm not going to go through each one. I don't mind answering questions this morning for any specific sessions or what might be covered, but I just wanted to make sure that highlight the schedule was on our website. And these are all the agencies and partners and anyone that's participating in the symposium. So whether they're presenting, they're moderating, they're leading a workshop. And I think this is a really great snapshot of all the partners and collaborations and people and agencies that are bringing information together for this event, that have been conducting research, management, science here in Clear Lake and in the basin. And so I'm just really proud and excited that all of these partners are together for this event. Our event blessing will be by Jaime Boggs. Really appreciative for him for being able to participate. He is a member-at-large in Robinson Rancheria Council. Thank you, Jaime. And our keynote speaker will be Geneva Thompson. She is from California Natural Resource Agency and the Deputy Secretary for Tribal Affairs. And Geneva has been out here to Clear Lake. She's been involved in the Clear Lake Blue Ribbon Committee for Clear Lake Restoration. She's been to site visit, she's been out on her boat, she always attends the meetings. She's really been invested in work here in Clear Lake and really excited to have her as our keynote speaker. So a little details on the evening activities on Thursday at 6:00 PM at Robinson. We'll have a science networking reception, so this will be a poster presentation where the public and the partners can mingle with scientists, managers, ask those detailed questions, have conversations over mocktails and snacks. And again, there'll be posters there that will be presenting some of the information that isn't covered in the talks during the symposium. And then on Friday evening, here in Lakeport, it's Sopa Rees. The doors open at 6:00 and the show starts at 7:00. We're going to have the Big Lake, Big Science, mini-science documentary, and we're really excited for this. There hasn't been a movie that's focused on Clear Lake and science ever, so this is really fabulous. And thank you so much, our videographer and editor extraordinaire, Sam Houston, is just, this would not have been possible without him, and we're really grateful that he's here in county and can help put this on. And then thank you for the admin, County of Lake, your support for also being a producer of this. So thank you. We did a lot of media marketing. We actually had a goal of 120 posts, 120 days. We really wanted to saturate the social media market for this event and get as many people excited about it as possible. And so we're able to do that, we're on goal. And if anybody wants to follow us on social media, if you haven't already, our handles are here. Facebook, @ClearLakeCAScience, Instagram, @ClearLakeCAScience, and then also our Xer formerly Twitter handle. And we did market a lot of hashtags, again, to kind of spread the awareness of this event. And it's just really important that we have a presence on social media to get this event going. Here's an example of some of those posts that we've put out so earlier, was just to kind of let people know about the Science Symposium, when it was going to be, the dates. And then, as we got closer to the event, over the last month, we've been doing specific sessions, callouts in our posts. So if we have, you know, the landscape restoration projects, those will be talked about on Friday. We have an environmental permitting 101 session. There's, of course, a Clear Lake Hitch Status and Conservation. This is a double session that'll be on Friday from 2:30 to 5:30. And then, of course, our Clear Lake Monitoring and Modeling Session. So we wanted to make sure we were calling out each of those particular sessions with their specific days and times throughout our media campaign. And if anybody wants information, again, please go to the website on our County of Lake website underwater resources. We have a specific tab for the Clear Lake Integrated Science Symposium, and everything that you need is there. There's a lot of links that go off for, you know, volunteer registration, or there's a registration on Eventbrite. We want to make sure that we're anticipating how many people will be there. But you can get all of those links and the schedule, the list of sponsors, all of that's available at this website. So my last two slides just go over the budgets and funding sources, because this is a public held event. I want to be totally transparent with how it's being funded. So these are all of the major funding, financial sponsors and supporters for this. And we do have support from the Watershed Protection District. And we have budgeted between $10,000 and $20,000, spread over two fiscal years for this. It's really hard to gauge exactly how much this event would cost, since we've never done it before and we didn't know exactly what it would entail. And I believe I came to the Board before, I think in April, to talk about this, April, March or April, and you guys asked me how much it would cost, and I said, I don't know. Well, we have a little better idea now, but we wanted to make sure we budgeted enough through the district. And if you look at the bottom of the slide, I have listed the State Lands Commission Code and the Legislative Directives of the Watershed Protection District, Senate Bill 1136, that I think provide the rationale for why the Watershed Protection District should be doing this event and why we can dedicate funds from the district for making it happen. I will also acknowledge that we got various small donations and contributions from companies and some individuals that totaled about $2,000 for this. So really excited and thankful for them to provide that support. So here is our budget so far. We had a spending goal of about $50,000 is what we were expecting we would spend. We, right now, currently, with all our estimates, about $45,000, so that's great. That leaves about a $5,000 buffer for unanticipated costs that might show up right before the event or during the event. And you guys can see some of the breakdown there for planning, food and drink and swag, which were, of course, some of the larger cost items. And I will note that some of the specific donations we got are the granted funds. So we have a repurposed water quality data grant that was put towards this event. And then we had a grant from the Westside Sacramento Integrated Regional Water Management Committee, and those grants came with specific purposes. So they were for food and drink receptions and breaks, or for swag items, like some of the donations were specifically for swag items. So that's how some of the funding for those items came about and some of the requirements. And then here's the grant sources, which is just the graphic showing what I showed earlier. But what I wanted to really point out was that of the funding sources that we were able to get for this, out of what we spent so far, 83% of this event was spent outside of district funds, and I think that's great. So that's pretty much on par with when we do any grant project. You know, the grant pays for about 50 to 75% of what we do, and then we fund the rest with district funds. So this is right along those lines, like any other project we do. And so we have a little bit of local investment, and we can really maximize it with some of those outside funding sources. So thank you so much for your time today. And again, I just want to thank all of our sponsors that made this event possible, and we're really excited to have them there in person and see them next week. The website is on the top of the screen there, our hashtag, and then our social media handle there at @ClearLakeCAScience. Please follow us. And thank you so much, Lake County and the Board for supporting this. Thank you, especially District 4, Michael Green, for putting in a big chunk of money early on. We really appreciate that. So with that, I can take any questions, and thank you so much for the time today.
Any questions?
Angela, we're all so excited about this. We've been looking forward to this for a long, long time. So I really appreciate all the work that the departments put into this. And what a great event for our new director to attend and meet so many of our stakeholders. I have a couple of questions. How is attendance coming on Eventbrite?
Thank you for that question, Supervisor Pyska. Yeah, so Eventbrite, the way you can sign up is for each day, for day activities, and then you can sign up for the evening activities also separately. And then we also have digital binder options, so actual physical printouts for sale. And we have, so far, the last time I checked, about 124 to 130 for events out of the 200 limit capacity at Robinson Rancheria. So we're really excited. That's right on par. We're expecting a push towards, closer towards the event. And yeah, so that, yeah, we're excited about those numbers. If I get 200 people in chairs during this event, I will be a happy camper. I'm really excited.
Yeah. Oh, that's great. Looks like we're on track. And then the next question is about the resources that'll be available. We, all the time, get questions from our constituents about, you know, what's going on with the lake. It's always a really broad question. And how will we be able to point them to some of the resources and research that comes out of the symposium?
Yeah, that's also a really great question. So part of this symposium was to not just have everything in one place and present it at one moment in time, and not just to capture it in like a dusty binder that would sit on the shelf and nobody see it, but we're creating what's called a digital binder. So that is copies of all the presentations, the abstracts, the biographies of the speakers, their websites, where you can get their data, where you can learn about their projects. All of that will be together on this website, so we'll keep the integrated Science Symposium website. We also will be, as much as connectivity allows, we're going to be having remote access for the symposium via Zoom webinars, and I believe there'll be some live streaming. The area does have some connectivity issues, so we're not guaranteeing it 100% of the time. But we definitely are going to be recording all of the sessions, and then those will be also provided in little snippets for somebody to be able to preview now and going into the future. And again, thanks to Sam Houston for committing to be able to do that. So he's in charge of the tech for this and making sure that we get those recordings, and they'll be available on the Water Resource Department YouTube. And then we can highlight them as we go on the future for specific issues that arise, like in lake management or hitch conservation. So hopefully, those will be able to help you when you're responding to constituents that have specific concerns about the lake or the watershed. And if there's something specific that you guys need that people ask for, let me know, so we can build it in, because I want to make sure that we're producing the right materials that can communicate the science and the research to the public. So I totally acknowledge we might forget something. And so if there's anything specific that you would like, let us know.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any other comments from the Board? Supervisor Green.
Yeah. Thank you, Angela, for the great presentation. It's great to hear the excitement in your voice. This is a very exciting event. Dr. Apodaway, I'm very excited that you're here. I know a big draw for you in coming here was just the amount of natural resources here and the many challenges that come with it. I'm excited for you, and I do want to point out that in the midst of all this planning, Water Resources, our staff have gone through a change, reorganization, a new department head, ongoing staff challenges. So the work is certainly there. And in the midst of all this change, Angela, to see this project come forward and come together, super excited. I did go on Eventbrite and I volunteered, so I want you to put me to work on that Thursday and Friday. I don't care if I'm running swag bags, I want to help if I can. And if you still have a call for volunteers and you need some additional help, I hope people listening to this will throw down. But even if you aren't volunteering, even if you aren't a scientist, I think you're going to find a lot of good information here. So let's pack the seats, let's have a really good event. I don't know what I don't know about this lake, but I'm going back to the fact that it's been 25 years since the last big event here. And I've had a deep dive, for various reasons, into about 50 years of watershed district history. So we were talking about algae 50 years ago, we're talking about algae today, and many other things like Clear Lake Hitch. So to see this come together in such a beautiful way, it just makes me very proud of our Water Resources Department and staff, and I think I'm going to be very excited to see what the scientists bring to this.
Supervisor Simon.
Thank you very much, Dr. Apodaway and Angela, for bringing this. The one question I have is, because we're talking about the most maximum, you know, viewing of this stuff. So since, I think she said Sam created the movie that's going to be done, Sam, was that right, Angela, or no?
Yes, that is right. So we have a, outside of the scientific symposium, we wanted to create something that was a little more like on the entertainment but accessible side, that kind of did a snapshot of, you know, what's going on in Clear Lake and some of the issues. And what we really wanted to do was to produce something that said, Clear Lake is unique. Clear Lake is not like any other lake, and we want people to come here and study it, and we want to do the management that's needed. And this is a really great place to do that work and also express our love for Clear Lake. So it's kind of like a love letter to Clear Lake, this movie is. I've kind of been saying that all along. And also, kind of a call for scientists and researchers to come to our lake. It's a unique system. It's novel, you're not going to see it anywhere else. And there's a community here that really depends on their lake and are invested in, you know, the science and the research that's needed and the action to make Clear Lake the best lake that she can be. So that is kind of what the film is about. And we're, you know, excited to have a lot of the interviewees and participants in this film. You know, we couldn't fit it all in like a 40, 45-minute film, but we have all of those interviews and ideas and perspectives that we'll have that we can use for then future products. And again, just really indebted to admin for being able to produce this with us and Sam for being able to film it and organize logistics. And I hope that answered your question.
Yep, answered my question perfectly.
Supervisor Simon.
And my thoughts were, you know, if we could work with PEG TV to get this, we're always looking for an educational opportunity. Maybe those discussions have already happened, but getting it on there to really run this, you know, all the time, you know, as we continue to do that. So that's great to hear that the discussions are already, are going to happen. So, yeah, I think this is a great program and opportunity to get out there.
There is, there's a collaborative, excuse me, there's a collaborative between PEG and the county. PEG will be there on the 16th.
I think the sessions and the talks would be recorded and made available for later viewing.
All right. Open it up for the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak about the item on the agenda?
Good morning. Let me get to the mic. All right. Still Kriegs, but anyway, I'm Tom Slate, and I really wasn't prepared for this. I just found out about all this recently. I'm not involved in social media. I'm on the computer all the time, online, but I didn't know, so I'll just put together what I have. And this is my perspective, something that I, issues that I think may not come out of these, and I think this is all good intentions. I'm sincere about that. But I think there may be some information that won't be included. And again, this is my stream of consciousness presentation here, but it seems to me, after 22 years, for me, it is quite obvious that there are major aerosol spray operations taking place over Lake County. I could be wrong, of course. I don't think so. And back then, when some of us were questioning this, we were told nothing is going on. Well, a major body of people who have the credentials to do the research have come out with major amounts of information to be considered and that I think is not going to be brought up by this at all. And so I brought a few things to hand out, which I expect, because you people, it seems to me, are kind of in a spot, right? If this, if there's reality to this, where does this put you? Well, I think you people have, especially Moke, I know you a little bit, I think you have a conscience, I'm sure you do, and probably the rest of you, too. When you look at this, and there's some legitimate information here to be considered. And I made 20 presentations to the Board of Supervisors between 2006 and 2012, right here in this room. And I have all that on a 93-minute DVD. You can see what went on there. So this is nothing new, and I don't have the particular date, but I made a DVD, a 20-minute DVD of video clips from 2002 and 2003, taken in Lake County. And only 20 minutes, you can take a look at what was going on in our Skype back then, draw your own conclusions. A colleague of mine, Dayton Wiggington, has a website. I'm not done yet, but thank you. This booklet, he sent me a box of these quite a while back. He has a website, geoengineeringwatch.org, that you can check out. Check out this book, Draw Your Own Conclusions, but there is major amounts of information that I think needs to be considered, that is probably not going to be involved in any of this. Again, I don't doubt the good intentions, because we're always told, you know, don't look over there, don't look at this, just look over here. And I'll see if I have anything else. But, oh, and my goal is to show, from my perspective, that it is, that whatever is going on, other people with science backgrounds, what they are finding, to as far as we can tell, what it is. That's That's, that's not my role, and has never been my role. And just, oh, as far as, oh, I think I said that the survey, I didn't know anything about this until about a week ago. And so what I will give you is, obviously, this book, each one has a copy of that 20-minute DVD in it. I'm disclosing this information to you. My video is called White Haze and Jet Trails. In fact, they showed it on the channel.
Right, we're going to have to wrap up your comments, Mr. Slate.
Pardon me?
You had your three minutes, you have to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. They showed my video on the PEG channel about 20 or 30 times, 2010, but.
We'll take the video and we'll go from there and.
I expect you to ignore it, and I'm not being disrespectful, that's kind of how it works.
If you could show up to this and explain and contribute to it, that'd be great, and we'll get the video. Is there six of them, or do you just have one?
Oh, no, I have plenty.
Perfect, so I'll have.
Yeah, I have one for each of you and one for this gentleman.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Two, three, five.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this, either in chambers or on Zoom?
Betsy Khan.
All right.
Well, here's eight, take that.
All right.
Thank you, and I am sincere when I say thank you, you know that.
Thank you, Tom. All right.
I'll just leave it here.
All right, Betsy, go ahead.
Good morning, board. Betsy Khan for the Essential Public Information Center. I have been involved in the U.S. EPA Nonpoint National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permitting programs for the state of California and the county of Lake for 24 years. I have been a member of the public, involved in the Clean Water Program for its entire existence, and I have been very, very delighted to have Angela DePalma-Dao as a special guest on my radio program on KPFZ every month for the last two or three years. She provides us with an update on all the water programs, all of the grant projects, the Blue Ribbon Committee, and so forth. This is a tremendous achievement for the county of Lake, and I just wanted to let you know that this is received very well by the public. We cannot thank you all enough for sponsoring this. It's a real feather in your cap to have this done, and we so appreciate the work done by the Water Resources Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Betsy. Is there any other hands? Donna Makowitz, go ahead, you have your three minutes.
Good morning, board. Donna Makowitz, Red Bud Ottoman. I am super excited to be involved in this science symposium. Angela, Janine, the whole group have done an amazing job, and I'd like everyone to know it's not just for the scientists. The average person is just going to be amazed at all the information that's going to be presented, and there are so many fantastic programs, it's going to be hard to decide which session you'd like to go to, so I hope everyone will come on out, and it's just going to be totally the best thing of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. We'll see you there. Anyone else on Zoom?
So I would like to appreciate like the support which we have received from the Board of Supervisors, and also the Water Resources staff. It seems it's long-term in making, but it does took like a substantial effort from the staff, so I would like to thank everyone.
All right, thank you, Doctor. Any other, I didn't even close public input, so no hands came up or anything? All right, so I'll bring it back to the board, and Supervisor Green, go ahead.
Just very briefly, just because it was brought up, one reason I'm excited about this science symposium is it's science. This is not the first reference I've heard today about geoengineering. I heard a clerk get grilled about geoengineering at a recent city council meeting here in Lakeport. It's upsetting to me when people who apply their lives and their education to pure science and applied science here within our watershed, and when people come up with their own versions of science and other things that they think should be reviewed during our development of policies to benefit Clear Lake. So everyone is free to have an opinion, but one reason I value this scientific conference is we're going to get the experts in the room, and we're going to do some real science. And that's another reason I'm very excited about this. We need to be able to counter scientific misinformation in this day and age just as effectively as we need to advocate for true science. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other closing remarks, I will close out with saying that I hope to see everybody at this, or as many people as possible, at this fully-packed event both days. It goes into the evening both days, and I just, I get a lot of folks that have questions about the lake that I try to answer. Of course, I'm not a professional, and I have to depend on the professionals in our Water Resources Department and other folks that come along and give that input, so this is a place where they can get that. So I've been sending this to some folks here and there who've been trying to go, I'm glad it's pushed out there so we can get some more knowledge and then know how better to understand our lake and whatnot, I guess we could say there. So with that, I guess there's no other comments, we'll close this item out and move on to the 10 o'clock, which I see it's going to be continued, right? But I'll still read it out as we are obligated to do so.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so for this item, since it is the consideration for the first reading of the ordinance, the suggestion here would be to open up an item with the recommended action of a motion to continue it at that specific date and time for the board with public comment, any public comment as to the proposed continuation.
Okay, all right, so I'll go ahead and read item 6.6, public hearing, consideration of ordinance for the county of Lake unincorporated and county-owned and leased property is governed by the Board of Supervisors to regulate smoke, or smoking, I'm sorry, and tobacco use, and the hearing is to be continued to August 27, 2024 at 9:15, but I'll go ahead and open it up so we can either make that action or anything else that's needed in that, so. Should we open up the public first before?
Yes, just as with any other item, if your board wants to discuss the continuation, and then subsequently, any public comment, and then bringing it back for board action.
Any discussion before I open the public input? Nope. I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to speak on this item that came and tending to be here for 6.6. All right, sir, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Greg Dameron from Blue Zones Project. At our steering committee meeting on Thursday, we had a little update from Lars Ewing on his weighing into that, and I was really thrilled with his report out that details were being dug into. Really appreciate that, and just wanted to continue encouraging that effort. I was at a state park in the foothills this last week, and there was a long list of things you couldn't do at the river, including use of glass materials, alcohol, and other things, and I just wanted to say that we have rules. We're a populated state in California, so we have a lot of state resources, and we have a lot of public spaces, and there's rules that go with that. And so just want to bless and encourage and normalize rules that benefit all of us, our safety, the safety of our children, and the health of our community. So stay with it. I know it's a long and arduous process, I appreciate the staff and all their investment in that, but we applaud, and we'll be here to applaud when it's finalized. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Is there any on Zoom? I see someone coming up, so. And you know this item will be continued, but go ahead.
Yeah, so my name's Liberty Francis, Lake County Public Health Tobacco Project Director, and I just want to thank you all for the time and effort, and just give you an update that we did meet with all the directors, and we're currently taking their input to revise that ordinance to bring back to you on the 27th.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, none on Zoom? All right, so I'll bring it back to the board for action to move this forward.
Move to continue this item to August 27, 2024 at 9:15 a.m.
Second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and so we are at 10:12. So we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break and then come back. I'll just say, we'll come back at 10:20, we'll take like an eight-minute break. We'll save five minutes, and I'll start at 10:20. All right.[1196.33]
Yes, I am. We are getting ready here so if we can. We can all come on back and see if we can move forward with our consent agenda items that were pulled. I have three here, so can I start? I'll go ahead and just read them off. I'm sure they'll be short shortly here, so we'll start with, we'll go backwards. And we will do 5.19, approve Lake County Sheriff's annual military equipment report. This was pulled. I'll give it to you, Lloyd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sheriff. So it is pulled just for purposes of clarification. On the memorandum itself, it provided some recommendations for your board's consideration. The suggestion here is, for purposes of your board action, that it is recommended, that the motion would be to approve the report in accordance with Government Code Section 7072 and Lake County Ordinance Number 3123. And that's the only point of clarification as to why this item was pulled for your board's consideration.
All right. So that one was pulled for those reasons? Is there anyone, anything else, anyone else wants to add? All right. Sorry, I just started, I just started. Okay, so with that, I see the, I'll open up to the public, I see the sheriffs here. Did you have anything to add or?
No, we had no problems with him.
All right. I don't see any, is there any hands in Zoom, Johanna? No? All right, so we'll bring you back to the board for action.
Just super quick question for county council then. I don't see the ordinance proposed for renewal in the packet. So is this a dual, is this a twofer? Where you receive the report and then also take a vote to renew the ordinance? Was this an urgency ordinance?
So the, and that's part of the clarification because it's not the renewal of the ordinance. It's the approval of the report was done pursuant to the ordinance, and the ordinance is actually attached, is included in the report packet itself as part of the agenda item, starting on page four of that PDF document. It was made a part of that, that attachment labeled, titled AB 481 Annual Report Fiscal Year FY 23.24.
So the form of the motion would be, we shall either disapprove or renew its authorization for that type of military equipment?
Right, so the clarification would be, the motion would be to approve the report in accordance with Government Code Section 7072 and Lake County Ordinance Number 3123.
Cross out the recommendation.
I don't understand. You're saying that ordinance is the renewal of the authorization?
Correct, under section.
It should be a reso. I don't think we're continuing, we're not renewing an evergreen ordinance. It's not, the ordinance I'm seeing is not coming back to the board for renewal year to year. It does talk about renewal of an authorization, which I assume could be a reso or some other type of thing.
It could be done by motion. It's done pursuant to Section 2-207.1 and .2 of the ordinance. It's really in Lake County, it's codified in Lake County Code Chapter, or Section 2-207.
I'm looking at point three on the next page, page four. During the annual review, we approve a renewal of the authorization.
All right.
So on 2-207.2, it's on the, of that ordinance stated that the Lake County Sheriff's Office shall submit an annual military equipment use report to the Board of Supervisors containing the information required by Government Code Section 7072. And that code section, as that code section may be amended from time to time. And the Board of Supervisors shall determine whether each type of military equipment identified in that report has complied with the standards for approval set forth in Section 2-206.1 in that ordinance here and above, and Government Code Section 7072. So this item is presented to your board for approval pursuant to that specific section in the ordinance.
All right. Is there anything we'd like to end with Supervisor Green?
Well, I just think of the form of the motion is, I don't think we're technically renewing the ordinance. I think we are renewing the authorization that the ordinance references, but maybe that's just semantics.
All right.
And so to make that clarification, your board may move to approve the report itself just in accordance with that Government Code Section 7072 and that ordinance, done pursuant to that ordinance, ordinance number 3123.
So moved.
Yeah, I opened it.
Second.
So the motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. I will now move on to 5.12. What is that, is that, did you say that one? Yes, and so we'll go to 5.12. Approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement between Lake County, or County of Lake and Hilltop Recovery Services for Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services in the amount of $561,703.77 for fiscal year 2023-24, and authorize the Board Chair to sign.
And I apologize, Chair, there's no problems within 5.2, 5.12. The compensation portion that needed to be changed is later on in the document, just not at the front of the document. So I apologize for pulling this item.
Just for clarification on the last item, I just want to make sure. Mine says 3123, and you said, did you say 3132? Just want to make sure we have that. I apologize for asking that question, but am I reading it wrong? I know it might have just been a wordsmith, but I thought I heard you say 3132.
It would, it should be 3123. If I mentioned the other one, I'm supposed to apologize.
If you guys heard the same. Okay, perfect. That one, I must have heard it wrong. I just wanted to clarify and make sure we got it passed.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, so we were at, opening it to public comment. Is there anybody on Zoom? No? Okay. Bring it back to the board for action. This is for item 5.12.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number One from 5.12.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we will now move to 5.8.
There was a part of that motion to authorize the chair to sign. I don't know if we need to expressly include that.
Yes, that could be in a second motion for.
Okay.
Moved to authorize the Board Chair to sign Amendment Number One as just approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. We'll close that one and move on to 5.8. Approve Second Reading of Ordinance Amending Article Five of Chapter Three of the Lake County Code relating to Commercial Weighing and Measuring Device Registration Program. And this was, go ahead. Lloyd, go ahead.
For this, also as a clarifying point, for purposes of the second reading of the ordinance, under the recommended action for your board, it would be to, just for your board to offer the ordinance and typically, based on past practice, the, once the title of the ordinance would be read, just in title for purposes of this offer.
Any comments? Now, open it up to the public for item 5.8. No one on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
As stated by county council, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Oh, yeah.
So offered.
Your Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
And then I'll read it. It's an ordinance amending Article Five of Chapter Three of the Lake County Code relating to Commercial Weighing and Measuring Device Registration Program.
All right. That closes, that closes 5.8. And so we can now move on to our 10:30 on our timed items, which is Public Hearing. 6.7, Public Hearing, Consideration of Comprehensive Retailer Licensing Tobacco Ordinance, TRL, and Code of Ordinance in Efforts to Address the Continual Decline of Lake County's Health Rankings and the High Rates of Youth Tobacco Use. And Health Services Director Anthony Arden and Project Director Tobacco Education and Prevention Director, Project Director Liberty Francis. Thank you.
It's on, no. So I won't be able to, it's in our, in my drive for the county.
Yeah. Do you need a couple of minutes?
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Maybe we could take another short break? Or did you, did you have something you can talk about? Okay, so we need a couple of minutes then. All right, we'll take another five minutes and then we'll come back at 10:30. Five, well, we'll say 10:40. We'll just say 10:40. I'm going to say 10.
All right. Looks like we have everything we need, so we'll come back to order here. And I will go ahead and give the floor to Director Arton, so he can give the floor to Liberty Francis. All right.
Good morning, and thank you for having us back again today. We, I am Liberty Francis from the Lake County Public Health Department Tobacco Education and Prevention, and I am the project director. We are here today to present the tobacco retail license that your board requested for us to develop a draft for. So I just have a little presentation before we move forward, so. So first of all, Lake County continues to have one of the highest smoking rates in the state of California. At times, it has been more than double the state rate. Ninety percent of our smokers report that they started using tobacco products before even age 18. Our current law in the state of California is 21 years of age or older. Despite the efforts to limit youth access to tobacco, youth are still able to access these tobacco products. And here we have two different surveys. Some are Lake County students reported as part of the Healthy Kids Survey. Sixty-five percent of 11th graders said that it's easy to access tobacco products on their own. Sixty percent of 9th graders said it's easy to access. And forty percent of 7th graders said it was easy to access tobacco products living here in Lake County. So that shows how it compares to our state rates, which are much lower. In 2018, tobacco youth purchase results from the state decoy operations. The tobacco retailers that were observed during that time, 100% of them failed and sale, sold to youth during that inspection. This shows that all of our tobacco control programs that are funded by Prop 56 and 99 throughout the state are tasked with doing what's considered a youth purchase survey. So it may not be a decoy operation for law enforcement purposes, but it is for data. And this reflects us in the North Coast region. And 27% of tobacco retailers were selling to minors. And as you look at this state-of-California map, our North Coast and Tri-County South are between 22.6 and 25% of violation rate. And the only area which is higher is Los Angeles County. Okay, so tobacco use harms over electronic smoking devices. These devices have become highly addictive. They interfere with normal brain development of youth, create weaker immune systems, inflammation and irritation of the airways, destruction of the avioli in the lungs. It actually explodes inside their lungs, which they would have to have surgically removed. It does not repair itself. Increased risk of blood clotting, stiffening of the blood vessels, increased acid reflux, and it exacerbates mental health issues, especially anxiety and depression. So we surveyed, and two different surveys throughout Lake County recently, of residents that live in our county about tobacco-related issues. Ninety-three percent of those folks believed that flavored tobacco products are harmful to youth. Ninety-five percent believe that it's important for communities to address and prevent youth from using tobacco products. Eighty-four percent said they would be in support of local policy or law that prohibits the sale and distribution of all flavored products and designate a portion of this annual license for enforcement. Eighty-four percent believe that their community has been negatively impacted by smoking, vaping, and other tobacco uses. Studies found when policies are adopted to include enforcement and penalties, the youth sales are reduced. One of our neighboring counties, Sonoma County, prior to their TRL's tobacco retail license being established, they had a very high failure rate for their youth purchases as well. I believe it was around 18%. And once those municipalities started addressing tobacco retail licenses and putting those into place, their youth rates for sale dropped to 1.8%. This graphic here was developed by Stanford Medicine, and it shows the nicotine levels in the different tobacco products. So as you see, one pack of cigarettes contains 22 milligrams of nicotine. And as you grow up the line to the different products that have been developed over the last few years, the nicotine amount in those products are increasing to very unsafe levels of nicotine, especially when used by a young adult or child. So one of the popular ones that we are seeing in the schools is the Flume, which is 400 milligrams of nicotine. And then the Elf Bar, 650 milligrams of nicotine. And they actually have a Geek Bar now on, on sale that has been found here in our county that is even more than that. So what we're being told by tobacco users is that these products, if they're a heavy vapor, they're going through these products in three days, four days. So if you consider that Elf Bar being the equivalent of 590 cigarettes, they're going through that in two to three days. So we have lots of California tobacco laws currently. As I said before, that they are 21 years and older. They have, they are tasked with IDing anyone who looks under the age of 27 years old. And that they're also have decoys. If they ask their real age, they have to do so. There's inspections that happen. But as I stated before, Lake County has not been inspected by any state regulatory agency since 2018. Other Tobacco State Act laws, you know, they're currently not allowed to sell flavored tobacco products. But that SB 793 that was on a ballot measure and approved in the state of California did not have a way to enforce that law, and they gave the authority to local jurisdictions to enforce that. Through our observations here in Lake County, we know that there are tobacco retailers that still are selling flavored products. And we also know that there are retailers that are not state licensed to sell tobacco products, but they are selling tobacco products. So this is one of the signs that is mandated at every register. It is the State Act sign. It has to be updated periodically. So if a retailer has an old sticker at their register, then they are automatically out of compliance. This has to be at every register. So what would our implementation process look like? In June, our department, Health Department, applied for a Department of Justice grant for implementation, retailer education, and enforcement. They should be giving out award letters in October. Presentations to community members, stakeholders regarding the benefits of a tobacco retail license, and what this specific ordinance would look like. So we've been in the community doing presentations to our, our county partners. Thank you. And then if this policy, sorry, ordinance is passed, then our department will be bringing a resolution to the Board of Supervisors to establish the tobacco retail license fee. And then we will post a position for Environmental Health Technician, who will assist us with issuing the licenses and help with compliance. Let me go back just a minute for the Department of Justice grant. We did receive letters of support from our local law enforcement chiefs for Clear Lake, Lakeport, and the Sheriff's Department. So those were all included, that they intend to partner with that Department of Justice grant. Then going back to our October-November deadline, our, our implementation plan, we're looking to train the staff, law enforcement, and community partners about the ordinance. And then November/December, we're going to educate retailers, explaining the retail license application process, procedures, fees outlined in the ordinance. And then in the ordinance, we looked at January 1 of 2025 being when the ordinance would be in effect. We would complete initial site visits to help those retailers get into compliance before their licenses are issued, and then, of course, issuing licenses. As far as the implementation and education, that will be an ongoing effort that will continue, because we know it may take a little bit of time to get our retailers up to speed where they need to be. Recently, when, speaking with some of our retailers that sell tobacco products, they have expressed that sometimes the tobacco companies will come in and tell them, well, that we have this new product. And so we will build that relationship with those tobacco retailers, where they understand what is and is not approved to sell under this, and the state regulations. So enforcement, this enforcement plan was developed with all three of our local jurisdictions. And they felt that it was important to have strong violation, sorry, a strong enforcement plan. And upon finding the department's first violation at a location, the license will be suspended for 30 days, and the retailer will have a hundred, or sorry, a $1,000 fine. Upon finding this second violation at this location within a 60-month period, they will have a 90-day suspension of their tobacco retail license, and they'll pay a $2,500 fine. A third violation in a 60-month period will be 120-day suspension and a $5,000 fine. Upon finding four or more violations within a single location, within 60 months, their license will be revoked, and no new license shall be, sorry, issued to that licensee until five years have passed from the date of revocation. After the first violation at a location where someone is selling tobacco products without even a state license or a local license, they will be issued a $5,000 fine, and they will not have the opportunity to have a license in our community. So as I mentioned previously, we met extensively with the city of Clear Lake, the city of Lakeport, as well as, at the time, Chair Sabatier. And we looked at this as a county project. And knowing that each jurisdiction has the opportunity to pass an ordinance like this, they were in favor of passing this policy in all three jurisdictions. We have yet to make the presentation to the entire board in Lakeport, but we have made a presentation in the city of Clear Lake, and we had consensus to move forward with this exact policy. In the event that this board passes for the unincorporated areas of Lake County, city of Clear Lake passed their ordinance, and city of Lakeport passed their ordinance, those two jurisdictions would give over the right to Lake County Health Services to implement this policy as far as issuing the licenses and handle enforcement. So we are in belief that when this policy addresses the entire county, it will improve our rates of youth smoking and tobacco purchasing that's happening. And we also believe that partnership between all three jurisdictions and all three law enforcement agencies, that we will have a united front, that we're going to make a stand and not allow youth purchasing of tobacco products in our community.
All right. Is there any questions, or Supervisor Green?
Thank you. First off, all these following comments are meant in a supportive way. Generally supportive of the measure, but the devil is in the details, and there are some details in this ordinance. One, thank you for clarifying that the eventual goal is to have a countywide ordinance, but as it's phrased right now, it's not super clear whether this ordinance is intended to apply in the unincorporated areas of the county or countywide. I see references on Section 2 Sub A that does not include the word unincorporated. That would seem to imply that a countywide ordinance is intended also on Section 14A1. The last sentence says notification of this violation will be sent to the jurisdiction in which the retailer was selling without a license. So it sounds like from your description, there's general buy-in from the cities that they would allow county enforcement. But it is not clearly worded here that that is the ultimate goal. And no, is there any provision in here that would allow, direct anyway, the Health Services Department to partner with cities in implementation of their ordinances, should they, should they pass one? So that's kind of the most substantive issue I'm going to raise right here. I did speak with County Council and Director Arton about some, I'll call them housekeeping items, just for sake of clarity. This is a big ordinance. It's kind of a landmark thing. But ordinances kind of get passed, and then they get filed away. Where it actually lives is in the Lake County Code online. And so if you have a top-to-bottom ordinance that reads cleanly on that code, so I think there is some ability here to add a purpose section and an authority section to the top of the ordinance where the definitions are. And we follow that same format with our microenterprise home kitchen ordinance. I just think it's a cleaner way to do that. Because people are going to be looking at this online, and they're, they're going to say, what is this all about? And who does this apply to? So clarification about the cooperation with the cities is needed. I believe I spoke with County Council. There are a couple of chapter references in here that probably still need to be changed to articles. Those would appear in Section 16 and 17. So just to be clear, that the references are, are going to be the article. And last thing is, where is this going to live? As currently proposed, it'd be under Chapter 9 of the Code, under Health and Sanitation. We also have a Chapter 11 pertaining to business licenses that I, I might propose as a slightly better fit. But long story short, again, supportive. I think there's a substantive problem with this as presented today in terms of the interplay with the cities. I do think there are some chapter references that need to get revised. And I do think there is the ability to do some housekeeping at the top of the ordinance and figure out where this is going to live in the code, so that when we do pass this puppy, it's super crystal clear what the intent of this is and stuff like that. At the end of the day, I think those various issues are going to make it difficult to get through a first reading today. So I think what I'd be seeking is board consensus to give direction to staff to clean up those housekeeping items as needed and bring it back to a later date for a first reading.
If I may, the reason that the decision went into the Health and Safety Code is because it's going to be very similar to a food permit, a COOPA permit for hazmat waste, and it's going to be run through the Environmental Health Department. And so it's my understanding also that the county unincorporated does not currently issue business licenses, and this is very different than a business license.
Well, I think that addresses your concern with that one, and I want to address the
microphone.
I want to address the concern about the city enforcement aspect of it.
Oh, doesn't it, is it not on? Okay.
It's on now.
Even closer. Sorry, usually my voice carries. So the cities, when they get to the point of where they're passing their resolutions or ordinances, they would have to write into their own ordinances to defer to the county for the jurisdiction. So we've already kind of addressed that in our meeting with the city administrators there. So I don't think that's something that would live in our ordinance, because it's something that would have to live with the city ordinances, to defer to us for the jurisdiction for enforcement of penalties and fines. I hope that makes sense.
All right. Did you have any thoughts on the purpose and authority sections at the top? Any opposition to that?
I don't have a strong feeling one way or another on that one. To me, that's just additional text to, I guess, address your concern, but I don't think that fundamentally alters the ordinance. I don't, no. Lloyd, did you have some text or language prepared to, to add in?
Yes, some suggested language, of course. You know, it's for your board's consideration as to the purpose section, purpose and intent section, and then the authority sections. You have ordinances code sections in our Lake County Code that Supervisor Green has pointed out in that MKHC?
Yeah.
M H K O. That code section does have a purpose and intent and authority section devoted to that chapter or article. And you also have code sections in the Lake County Code that do not have that. So staff does have some So staff does have some suggested language here for your board's consideration, and if your board approves that language, it would be, and moves forward with the first reading of the ordinance, it would be the approval of the first reading as amended, incorporating those, those additional sections or subsections, as well as Supervisor Green referenced, some of the other housekeeping minor revisions that I, that staff can walk the board through as part of the review for this ordinance.
And so just so we're clear, the purpose and scope section's not absolutely needed.
Correct. Your board may consider that absolutely up to your board. And if your board wishes to have the purpose and intent section as well as the authority section, staff has some suggested language for that.
Thank you, Lloyd. Supervisor Sabatier, give your pen up.
I just think it's already there, as the findings, which are the reasons we have to take action, and as the now-therefore, which is our purpose. I just think it's there with different words, and I don't want to change anything. I want to be able to move forward today.
Any other comments? We'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone in the public in the chambers that wants to come up and talk about this item on the agenda, 6.7, please come on up.
Don't be shy.
All right.
Good morning. I'm Becky Siletto. I'm the Superintendent for Conacta Unified School District. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. This morning, I'm here not only for myself and my district, but all of the districts in Lake County. We were all here at the last meeting. Unfortunately, we're all starting school this week, and I am fortunate to have a little bit larger staff than the rest of the districts, so I was able to kind of sneak away. We are all very united, as well as having our county superintendent with us. We live, I hate to say it, and breathe this problem every day at our schools and our districts. It is truly a crisis with our students. Every time I hear the data that Liberty presents so well, I kind of shudder a little bit inside, because I hate to be the one that says it, but the data, the collection of the data is great and strong. When you're talking with kids, sometimes they change their mind in formal settings and informal settings. And I'm going to tell you, the data that you've seen is frightening enough. The reality is it's stronger than that. I've spoken directly to high school students that when the Healthy Kids Survey came out and had a relatively lower number of percentage of kids who had or were currently vaping, my students looked at me unanimously, a bunch of them, and said, oh, no, 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 it's closer to 90, 95% of us that are actively using vapes and have them available. And that's not just my district. That's all six of us. We're all seeing it in our sights. A little scarier than that is it's not just high school. We're seeing it in our middle schools. We're seeing it in our elementary schools. I've seen, personally have seen it down to first graders with vaping. It's a crisis. We're talking about tiny kiddos here that with this amount of use in 10 years, it's going to be frightening, the medical situations that we're going to have on hand. So I'm here today to, again, speak for all of the districts in the county and truly encourage you to move forward with this. We know it isn't the solution, but we strongly believe that it is the first right start to help us get some momentum behind this crisis and protect our kids. So again, thank you for your time, and I, for all of us who our life is supporting our students every day, both instructionally and in their well-being, we really encourage you to move forward with this, and we thank you so much for your paying attention to this and looking into it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Brock Falkenberg, Lake County Superintendent of Schools. I asked Becky to present first because she can bring the emotion and the reality that is being experienced on our school sites across this county, as she works a little closer to that school site than I do. But I want to say I am not authorized to speak for all of the district superintendents across this county, but this is a subject that we speak about regularly. Our school sites are experiencing dilemmas, problems, struggles, as a result of the growing influence of vaping products and tobacco products on our school campuses. So I encourage you to move forward with a ordinance. If we need to take the time to really clearly identify, out of respect for Supervisor Green's concerns, a meaningful, workable, long-term solution in an ordinance, I would support that. However, we need to move this forward as rapidly as possible, and as the County Superintendent of Schools, I support your efforts moving forward in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Brock.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Perazzo. I work here in Lake County for the NorCal for Health Project, and I'm here today to speak about the tobacco retail license. The North Coast region is a tobacco prevention leader in California, and your neighboring counties of Delnor, Humboldt, and Mendocino all have tobacco retail licenses in their unincorporated areas, as well as some of their incorporated jurisdictions. Lake County can easily join this group and really set a precedent for the North Coast to have a comprehensive TRL that helps protect its communities. Tobacco retail policy is considered also best practice in public health circles and by the Centers for Disease Control. Important things to remember about the tobacco retail license, as far as retailers are concerned, that no tobacco retailers have gone out of business in Delnor or Humboldt counties because of the implementation of the tobacco retail license. Also, rural convenience stores can increase profit margins and revenue without tobacco, without cigarettes, without flavored tobacco. Communities all around us are adopting tobacco retail licensing laws as one way to combat the public health problems associated with tobacco use, reduce tobacco-related health disparities, and ensure compliance with tobacco laws. The TRL is a revenue-neutral way to establish, I'm sorry, way that local jurisdictions establish a structure to enforce federal, state, and local laws. We can have a say in what's happening in our communities, and a TRL will help protect our kids and our businesses without waiting for the state to come in and do something about it. So let's continue to find success in this region with a local tobacco retail license policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ooh, good morning. Good morning, Chairman Crandall today.
Vice Chair, but just fill in.
Yeah, Vice Chair Crandall and fellow supervisors. For the record, my name is Joanne Cicado. I use the pronouns she/her, and I live on Cobb. In 2023, when I first came before this board on this topic, I was working for the NorCal for Health Project. I hadn't smoked for 20-plus years after a 25-year habit that began at age 13. I found Lake County's adult and youth tobacco and nicotine use rates alarming, and was equally astonished at how tobacco and nicotine companies were allowed to and were actively working to addict our children to some of the deadliest retail products in American history. We know the vast majority, as was already spoken here, nearly 90% of our users begin before the age of 18, just like I did. Today, I come to you, of course, with that same personal history, but in a new position as the Project Coordinator for the California Health Collaborative's RISE Project. We're a statewide rural coordinating center that supports projects like NorCal for Health and the county's tobacco prevention program, but we do so all throughout rural California. This broader view has helped me understand that Lake County's high use rates and subsequently poor health outcomes that are associated with those rates are not about Lake County. We haven't done anything wrong, per se, but rather, it's about a concerted effort by tobacco and nicotine companies that target all rural communities. Through decades of aggressive and targeted marketing, advertising, and manipulative tactics, the industry remains a threat to our rural California communities and values. In fact, we should be furious that they have hijacked our rural way of life and our values and used those through their marketing strategies to addict us and our kids. So it's our policies or our lack of policies that have let these strategies persist. By adopting a youth-focused tobacco retail license ordinance, like the one before you today, you'd not only begin to protect Lake County's young people, you may actually be helping young people throughout rural California by strengthening a model. Both of these things are legacy that we can be proud of. And while it's helpful for surrounding jurisdictions to be in parity so that we lift everyone up equally, you shouldn't let that deter you from considering stronger protections in future iterations of this ordinance. There are other valuable options that communities do include in their prevention toolkits that further protect youth, such as minimum pack size and pricing and retail sales distancing from schools and other youth-friendly areas. This is a matter of dignity and respect for Lake County children and families. To close, I want to thank the board for taking this issue seriously and working diligently with the cities to boldly lead us away from Fs towards As in tobacco and nicotine use prevention. It's a great start, and our children and families deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? All right.
Hi. Sorry about that. Greg Dameron, Blue Zones Project. I'm going to share five personal experiences in three minutes, or yeah, whatever I have. Number one, I lost both of my grandparents, who were World War II vets, one fighting for the UK and one for the US, due to premature deaths to smoking. My father's father fought in the Pacific in the Navy, and he died at 63. Basically, emphysema ate away the lining of his throat, and that didn't kill him. He died from hiccupping for six months straight, nonstop, and then heart failure, and he smoked to his dying day because he was addicted to nicotine from a young age. The second experience, my son, who just turned 21 a couple of months ago, did undercover youth purchase surveys for about two years. In county of Sonoma, all jurisdictions, city of Willets, and unincorporated Humboldt County and Arcadia and McKinneyville, he was sold to 105 times. That was showing his true California ID, and in many cases, he was patted on the back, people joked, they laughed, and they handed him the tobacco products. In some cases, he bought over $100 worth of vapes, and it was just, you know, my son is not a very good actor, but I guess his insecurity doing that and making that ask was convincing. So that's the second experience. The third one was county of Sonoma was mentioned. I was the code enforcement designee for county of Sonoma after they passed their tobacco retail license ordinance in unincorporated, and then in Windsor. I ran the enforcement of that, and I can attest to lower sales rates and compliance when there were tobacco retail license ordinances compared to not. It was marketed, it was amazing, and honestly, I became very popular with retailers. They welcomed me in, they asked me to come back behind the counters. Distributors really manage a lot of the inventory. It's kind of a plug-and-play. They oftentimes shop owners just sit there, and distributors handle all of that. By having a county designee, an expert, they can ask questions. Many of them want to comply. I'm not saying all are good actors, but a TRL is a tool to provide key service that the state isn't and the federal government isn't, and it's a confusing arena, so that's why we need local support. Where are we, number five? So I think we're on five. Fine, if we're not, eight seconds. I've talked to dozens of youth here, and what Becky has shared, what Liberty has shared, same story. And we've done, been part of hundreds of community presentations, not hundreds, but hundreds of people have been engaged, their support, please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment in the room? If not on Zoom? Not on Zoom? Bringing it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier, or Chair Sabatier. Just real quick, I didn't say this at the beginning, and I should have. Taking over today because Supervisor Sabatier, as you could tell, has a hard time with his voice, he's coughing, and so he had a coughing attack, and now his voice is not as well as it normally is, so I filled in for him.
And that's good for everybody. I just want to ask County Council, do we need to have an implementation date in the TRL ordinance of January 1, 2025? I didn't see that in there.
It's in Section 3.
Is it in there?
It is.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I apologize for missing that. I know that Ms. Cicado mentioned future potential. Two things. One, I would love to get an annual review whenever it's appropriate for you to do an annual review. Maybe it's during budget, when you're talking to us, maybe it's during our workshop, when you're talking to us, but just to see what the impacts of the ordinance are, it would be good to continue to check in. And then a future amendment is one that I think is a missing component, but I don't want to stall what we have today. Online sales are part of our problem, and there are tools out there to negate online sales of tobacco products, which would benefit our local economy and our local retailers by forcing people through there, and we have control over the selling of those products to the youth through our TRL. So that's something that I hope we can bring back in the future to ensure continuity of working towards reducing youth access to tobacco products, and I'm ready to pass this as soon as possible.
Liberty?
In Section 2, it states online, or sorry, onsite sales.
Yeah.
It does say that it needs to be done in person, so that does prevent a tobacco retailer to allowing somebody to come into their establishment and order it online. It has to be purchased onsite.
But it will never, it will never stop UPS from delivering something to your property, and that's what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
So a future amendment at one point is what I would like to see.
And part of my plan, when this gets implemented, is to have this a part of our annual report, which will be a large document, which, when that is finished in June or July, upcoming years, will include the TRL data. So I'd like to have that, and we are in the process of starting to collect more data on a lot of our programs.
Oh, and I'm sorry. Lastly, I just want to thank the staff that have been working on this. It's not just staff, it's so many different agencies. Thank you for your patience. This has been a conversation since 2020, and I don't mean to be rude to us as a board, but I feel that since 2018, we know 100% of those that were, that a decoy operation failed. I feel that the lack of action from this board has been a failure to our youth to take care of this problem, and today's a great day that we're making that change finally, and so thank you for your patience. Thank you for continuing to work with us, and I'm looking forward to the changes that we're going to make with this.
Supervisor Piska? And then I'll...
I'm also really grateful that we have this in front of us today, and I know it was a long haul. And again, thank you for keeping this going, Liberty, and for all of you community partners for also doing this heavy lift. I have a high schooler, and I have someone going into middle school, and the conversations over the last weekend in my house about prepping for school, I'll just share. My high schooler was telling my younger son, hey, don't go in the bathrooms ever at school, ever. Just hold it all day, because there's always vaping in the bathrooms, and you just don't want to be a part of it. Because we're having conversations about, you know, being around people that are making choices that you don't want to make, and how do you keep yourself safe, and how do you avoid being guilty by association, and how do you avoid being complicit, and what does complicit mean? And those are the conversations we're having in our house, and so to hear her tell him, just hold it all day, that's the answer. So that's why I'm ready to move on this, and I can't wait for this to be part of our code. It's long overdue, but it is necessary.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Both my parents died of tobacco-related causes too. That doesn't mean I'm going to agree... That doesn't mean I'm going to agree with all this. I'm just letting you know, when I hear about one-year-old kids getting vapes, I don't think they went to the liquor store to buy it. Parents have responsibility in this. I want to go back to the structure of this. It's not clear that it applies to the unincorporated county only. I don't know, I'm not aware that we have any ability to apply it countywide under the statute that gives us the authority. That statute authorizes this jurisdiction to pass this. It doesn't necessarily automatically dovetail with city ordinances. Accordingly, the potential future relationship for enforcement in the cities is not expressly authorized in this ordinance. I suppose it can be done by MOU, but the ordinance itself is silent on it. And like any ordinance, as good as the enforcement. So I want to look at the clause that says each tobacco retailer is going to get inspected at least one time every 12 months. And I have to go to our cannabis permit program. They have, what, 120 permits, and they struggle getting out every year to that. So how many tobacco retailers are in the unincorporated county? And if the vision is to also bring on the cities for enforcement, how many tobacco retailers are you proposing to inspect every 12 months under this ordinance?
So this current ordinance is just for the unincorporated areas because we cannot, we don't have jurisdiction, this board doesn't have jurisdiction to pass those policies in Clear Lake and Lakeport, so their boards need to pass those policies on their own. And we were looking at an MOU-type of project to give the authority for those two jurisdictions for our environmental health to issue the license and do the enforcement. The DOJ grant is a little bit separate. That is separate from this policy here as far as the enforcement decoy operations that will be funneled through the Department of Justice grant initially. As far as the number of tobacco retailers, I know that currently, those that are registered with the state of California, I know that there are tobacco retailers that are not registered with a tobacco program through the California state system. We have about 75 currently throughout the entire county. I can get back to you with the exact number of unincorporated retailers, but I don't have that currently with me today.
I was just saying, I was like...
For unincorporated only? Oh, perfect.
So if you can come up to the mic real fast, I'll go ahead and leave it. It's still open, right? Did I? I'll open it back up just in case I didn't, so we'll go from there. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is just from the same source that Liberty cited before, the CTAT, which is by Stanford, and there's 47 in unincorporated, at least that have the licenses.
Thank you.
47 in unincorporated?
Unincorporated.
Okay.
And that was Joanne Cicado. That's okay.
And then finally, so question for County Council. I don't see the unincorporated word clearly expressed in either the title or the requirements of Section 2. Does it require a formal statement as such to ensure that people subject to this ordinance know it just applies to the unincorporated county?
No, no, it wouldn't be necessary because by default, when County of Lake, your board passes or adopts an ordinance, it is understood that it would only apply to the jurisdictional areas that your board, County of Lake, has control over. So that would automatically exclude, at this point initially, the cities which would have their own governing jurisdictions, governing bodies.
And the last question, you mentioned there may be some housekeeping on the chapter article references. I'm sure the board would be interested in that prior to making a motion.
Yes. So if your board may willing to consider the housekeeping minor revisions, I could certainly walk through those for your board's consideration so that, these are minor revisions, but the revisions nonetheless, so that if your board proceeds with adopting the, or with the first reading, approving the first reading of this ordinance, it would be as amended. If your board wishes, I could walk through those.
All right. Looks like we have a consensus for that.
My apologies. Lloyd did send me those corrections, and apparently I missed one. So I apologize for that.
And this is just for, you know, purposes of transparency. I believe much of the revisions, these minor revisions, have been uploaded in the document that is labeled...
725.
Yeah. Uploaded August 8/5 underscore TRL legal ledger 7 dot 25 dot 24. But again, just for purposes of transparency, I could walk through all of the revisions from the last posting under the Brown Act requirements of that time period of posting. I can believe it was last week or late last week, and walk through all those revisions, much of which is already reflected in what was uploaded in August 5. So to start, I think, because I would be referring to page numbers, so that would be the first minor revisions, set of revisions would be to label each sheet of the legal ledger of this document, ordinance document, with a page number, so it would be pages 1 through 15, which would correspond to each sequential sheet of this document. So with that being said, on page 1, under the all caps bold heading of Section 1, Findings, findings should be corrected to be spelled at F-I-N, in all caps, F-I-N-D-I-N-G-S. Moving on to page 2, the, I believe it's there on the later version, but just to, again, clarify, on page 2, above the title heading of Article 13 of Chapter 9 of the county code is hereby added as follows. That's around line 16 of that page. There should be a section, Roman numeral 2, above it. And from that, from this point on, I would proceed with each page number. Well, I'll just do it. So on that same page, around line 17 and 18, where it says Section 1 definitions, that should be changed to Section 9-116 definitions. And that is done. And I'll be doing that in the course of the rest of these pages because that would be the right codification number if, once this is placed in the Lake County code. So the last code section of Chapter 9 of the Lake County code was Section 9-115, so following through with that would be reflected here as starting in Section 9-116. And on that same line number on page 2, the word references to chapter should be changed to article. Further down on that same page, around lines 23 to 25, the words title, section, should be capitalized at the first letter. Again, just a minor correction there. Moving on to page 3, around line 4 through 6, reference to chapter should be changed, revised to article. Moving forward, further down, around lines 13 through 15, same type of revision, the reference to chapter should be changed to article.
Zoom is having a rave party.
We'll go ahead and take a break. We're having an issue with our Zoom and our cameras right now, or whatever you want to call it. So we'll take a five-minute break.
Hackers.
Okay. At least they're not screaming at us.
Spirit of my grandfather.
It wouldn't be if it was left.
And my father.
These are like little numbering things, capitalized. Yeah. Certainly. If we're at second reading, yeah.
I wonder who would know. We just go back to being kids. After each one. I used to buy the extended ashtray too. They could fill up. Yeah, it was like a giant ashtray. I can see some of those. How do you have the guys over there? Yeah, RC. I know what you're saying. What is best.
Welcome back, Lloyd. I appreciate you.
Places itself.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for them all to come up. Tower red and white Chevron. All the stores in my district that sell cigarettes.
Yeah. But a lot of them have like franchise laws and rules that are above the state level that they're already required to meet. Like some of them, it's an automatic ID, no matter how old you are.
Supervisor Green, I think we're ready to go. He found the glitch. Yeah. All right. It looks like we have corrected the issue, and we'll go ahead and continue where we left off with County Council Lloyd Guintavano.
Yes, continuing with the suggested revisions, moving on to page 5.
Yes, I think we should, we need Johanna, so we'll hold for a second.
Oops.
All right. I think she was, yes. So I apologize for going too soon there.
I'm glad you caught it. I wasn't even thinking about it.
Yeah, we would have had to start.
I'm an important person to have.
Yeah. Yay. No leave. Thank you. We're already started, yes. Sorry about that. All right, we're going to go ahead and continue forward.
So continuing on to page 5, this set of revisions around lines, around lines 19 through 20, the reference to Section 2, general requirements and prohibitions, the reference to Section 2 should be changed to Section 9-117. Further down, around on lines 24 through 25, the reference to chapter should be changed to article. And moving on to page 6, at the top, lines 1 through 4, all references to chapter should be changed to the word article. And further down on lines 16 through 18, the reference to chapter should also be changed to article. On that same page, lines 20 through 21, the reference to Section 3 should be changed to Section 9-118. Moving on to page 7, at the top, lines 1 through 2, the reference to Section 4 should be revised to state Section 9-119. And further down, around lines 10 through 11, the reference to Section 5 should be changed to Section 9-120. Around lines, line 16, the reference to Section 6 should be changed to Section 9-121. And on that same page, around lines 20 through 22, all references to the word chapter should be changed to the word article. And further down on lines 16 through 18, the reference to chapter should also be changed to article. On that same page, lines 20 through 21, the reference to Section 3 should be changed to Section 9-118. Moving on to page 7, at the top, lines 1 through 2, the reference to Section 4 should be revised to state Section 9-119. And further down, around lines 10 through 11, the reference to Section 5 should be changed to Section 9-120. Around lines, line 16, the reference to Section 6 should be changed to Section 9-121. And on that same page, around lines 20 through 22, all references to the word chapter should be changed to article. Moving on to page 8, around lines 1 through 10, all references within that portion, all references to chapter should be changed to article. Around lines 12 through 13, the Section 7 reference should be changed to Section 9-122. And on lines 13 through 15, the reference to chapter should be changed to article. Around lines 18 through 19, again, the word chapter should be changed to article, as well as lines 21 through 22, the word chapter should be changed to article. Now, on lines 23 through 24, just for further clarification, the phrase "that is prohibited pursuant to this chapter" that is unlawful pursuant to any other chapter, should be read to state "that is prohibited pursuant to this article that is unlawful pursuant to any other chapter." So just to make that clear, one word is changed, the other reference is retained. Moving on to page 9, at the top, lines 1 through 3, it should read, and I'll just read it in whole, "any other reason the granting of a license to the applicant that is not consistent with the requirements of this article, including the applicant's history of noncompliance with this article and other laws relating to the sale of tobacco products." That's how it should be read. And just about one line down, around line 4, the reference to Section 8 should be changed to Section 9-123. And further down, around lines 9 through 10, the reference to Section 9 should be revised to state Section 9-124. Around lines 13 through 15, the reference to the word chapter should be changed to article. Around lines 20, section, the reference to Section 10 should be changed to Section 9-125. And around lines 22 to 23, the reference to chapter should be changed to article. Moving on to page 10, at the top, lines 1 through 2, the reference to Section 11 should be revised to state Section 9-126. And from lines 2 through 8, all references to the word chapter should be changed to article. And around lines 8 through 9, the reference to Section 12 should be revised to state Section 9 through, 9-127. And then from lines 10 through 19, all references to the word chapter should be changed to article. Moving on to page 11, at the top, lines 1 through 2, reference to Section 12 should be revised to state Section 9-128. Around lines 5 through 6, the reference to the word chapter should be changed to article. Around lines 6 through 18, there is a reference to the phrase provisions of subsections B1-B5. That should be changed to the provisions of subsections B1 through B4 below. And then around lines 19, the reference to the word chapter should be changed to article. And then towards the bottom, around lines 26 through 27, the word thereon should be Moving on to page 12, around line 5, the reference to Section 14 should be changed to Section 9-129. And around lines 13 through 14, the reference to Section 15 should be revised to state Section 9-130. Moving on to page 13, around lines 4 to 5, the reference to Section 16 should be read to state Section 9-131. So Section 9-131. And from lines 5 through 20, all references to the word chapter should be revised to state article. And then lines 20 to 21, the reference to Section 17 should be revised to state Section 9 through, 9-132. And from lines 21 to 24, all references to chapter, the word... And from lines twenty-one to twenty-four, all references to chapter, the word chapter should be changed to the word article. And this would be the last page, uh, for the revisions, for purposes of the revisions. Page fourteen, the, at the top, lines one to two, the reference to section eighteen should be changed to section nine dash one thirty-three. And on lines two through seven, all references to the word chapter should be revised to state the word article. And that is all, as far as the suggested revisions for your board's consideration. And again, if your board proceeds, proceeds with the, the approval of the first reading of this, of this ordinance, it would be as amended.
All right, Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you so much, there's one, um, on, that didn't help. Page seven. It was originally called section six B. Did we change section thirteen C in that statement to the new number?
Meaning section C of this article?
Section thirteen C of this article.
Okay, okay.
Did we rename that to the new number?
That's right. Uh, so it should, and, and that, thank you for that clarification, because on page seven, lines twenty through twenty-two, the reference to section thirteen C should state section nine dash one two eight C. That will be the additional revision. Correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green.
Similarly, on page nine, under the new section nine dash one two three, the last sentence refers to section six. So I believe that would be amended to section nine dash one two one.
Correct, thank you for that.
All right. One second, did you wanna, I'll open it back up. Director Turner, please come up.
Thank you, we have not had, uh, Community, Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. We've had most of our discussions about the previous ordinance that was continued. But on this one, under definitions, I don't know the page number, cause it doesn't come up when we access it from the internet. But under section one in definitions, under G, department, means Lake County Department of Health Services and any agency or person designated by the department to enforce or administer the provisions of this chapter. We've had, I had some conversations with Liberty during the break, who assured me that this would not then be referred to code enforcement staff currently. However, you know, given that I really hope that this program will work in the future and not have to change for a long time, we, I would feel a lot more comfortable if the department definition could stop at means Lake County Department of Health Services, rather than any agency that that department designates. Because historically, frequently on health and sanitation matters, we get complaints deferred or sent to us from Health Services Department for our enforcement. So we'd just like a little additional clarity in that, that would be permanent within the definition.
So the intent of that definition is to allow us to work with our local law enforcement agencies, not with community development?
So can I, can I respond to that?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It doesn't say department, it says agency. And so we're not looking for another department to take this on.
Just as the sheriff's office counts as an agency, we also count as an agency.
But the fact that it could be the city of Lakeport, it could be the city of Clearlake, those are the agencies that this is looking to work with, as well as the sheriff's department. And so it kinda covers it all, but if it said department, I would be concerned just in the same way that you are. But it does not, cause that is not the intent at all from, from what we have in front of us.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green.
County Council, one more section on page eleven at line five, sections two through five should be amended to nine dash one one seven through nine dash one two zero, if I'm doing it right.
Just for clarification, I'm still trying to look for, oh, under page eleven, the reference to section thirteen A was initially section?
At line five, the reference to sections two through five.
Right.
And, and then I just found another one on page twelve. And the one on page twelve would be at line three, that reference to section seven would be amended to nine dash one two two.
Yes, that would be fine, and also like to add, because I just spotted it. Back to page eleven, the reference to section thirteen A should state section nine dash one two eight A.
All right, there's any other references? If not, so. Looking for action.
County Council, can you help me with the motion, please?
It'll be two motions, so the first motion would be to approve the first reading of the ordinance as amended, to be read in title only.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And then, yeah, she's gonna go ahead and read it.
It's an ordinance of Lake County regulating tobacco product sales, requiring the licensure of tobacco retailers, and amending the Lake County Code.
All right.
The second motion would be to approve the draft ordinance as amended, as amended, be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting for consideration and possible adoption.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and move on, thank you again, Director and Liberty.
Yes.
We'll move on to item six point eight, ten thirty. Consideration of request for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of abatement, two six five Butler Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California, APN number zero three five dash three nine one dash five eight. I have, we have Community Development Director Mariaa Turner and Code Enforcement Manager Marcus Beltramo. Coming to the.
Good morning.
All right, good morning. All right. Would we need to swear anyone in initially?
Wouldn't you swearing in for an assessment hearing? It's not an appeal.
We don't need to?
Yeah, we.
Okay.
Yes, swearing in.
All right.
You are here for this hearing, and you're in the Zoom room, please raise your hand. And if you're in the chambers, raise your hand. All right, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thanks.
All right.
Hello, Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. This is the first of three post-abatement hearings. And I will turn it over to our Code Enforcement Manager, Marcus Beltramo. Thank you.
Good morning to the board. My name is Marcus Beltramo, I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division for the County of Lake. Today, we're hearing an account and proposed assessment, a lien hearing for the property two six five Butler Street in Clear Lake Oaks, California. Two six five Butler Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California is located in Clear Lake Oaks proper. This was in the designated area of the Roadmap Task Force. This property was discovered through proactive code enforcement during, while conducting activities related to the Roadmap Task Force. To kinda put it in layman's terms, our officer was working the area, he was flagged down by neighbors in the surrounding community. They alerted us to this property, that the property was being used to, for people to park their cars, dump their cars, and also the property was being accessed, stripped, other miscellaneous type of things that were going on, that were affecting surrounding properties and the welfare of the general public. The officer here today that was handling this investigation is Officer Christopher Colan, if you need any specifics, he can provide his insight and his testimony on any questions the board may have. The owners are a Patricia Hacker and a Robert Hacker, it's our information and understanding that they are deceased. The property is owned as an R1 single-family residential property, it's improved with a manufacturer home. The property taxes are not delinquent, they've been kept up. Through the process, as we went on, we discovered that there may be an affiliation with a possible family member or related person stationed in Guam. So we did reach out to, send notices to Guam, to the address that we discovered, in an effort to notify a responsible or a proper, a party that has an interest in this. Also, we did reach out the, with the lender, we contacted the lender, and let them know of the issues occurring on the property and our notice, our notices and the violations occurring on the property. Here are some of the pictures that were taken of the property, so we utilized the vacant structure ordinance, the vacant structure ordinance does allow us entry into the premises if it's unsecured, also through the California Building Code, we are also allowed access into vacant structures if they're unsecured, basically just to do a cursory inspection and ensure that there's no safety issues occurring. These photos were taken, as you can see, there's miscellaneous rubbish and trash throughout the interior, this is, I believe, the garage area. On the right, you can see there's miscellaneous items just stacked all around the house, you can see a window that's unsecured. The house has been run through, miscellaneous rubbish and items strewn throughout the interior of the house. On the right, we also discovered that there was leaking water. The structure itself is actually in pretty good condition, it's, it's one of the type of structures that we would appreciate and like to see more in the Clear Lake Oaks area. But when we discovered the water issue, as you can see in the picture, mushrooms and fungus and fungi were forming. So that raised a concern here, because the persistent leakage of water could also cause mold issues and other health issues, which would affect the structure and anybody who occupied it, so we had concerns there. As you can see on the left, this is evidence of visible mold, that's a violation under the California Health and Safety Code. Again, on the right, it's just another picture of trash thrown throughout the interior of the property. Here, you can see an access point where the elements can get into the interior of the property, affecting the structure and the structural integrity. Again, another photo of trash and rubbish in the backyard exterior area. On the left, these were vehicles that were being parked by neighbors, they were just parking in there on this property without, to our understanding, without permission. One on the gold car, I believe we determined was inoperable, the one on the right was just being parked, just at random, just to park it there. We did issue a notice of nuisance in order to abate for the property, again, the main authority that we exercised here, or executed, was chapter five, the vacant structure ordinance, and then we cited several violations of the California Health and Safety Code, and chapter thirteen issues for garbage, rubbish, and inoperable vehicles. We did post a notice of violation on the property as well, but with the deceased parties, I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to move forward on the collection of any fines. We did issue it in last and final notice, the reason I provided this slide here is you can see, as the third addressee on there, we did set it to a place in Guam where we identified a party that may have an interest in this property. Like I said, it's a, it's a very nice mobile home. We, based on the conditions of the property, we did red tag it, it is on our red tag list. These photos here of the post-abatement, so under the vacant structure ordinance, we are to secure the property by boarding. We did board it up, on the right, you can see how we boarded it up from the inside to make sure it was secure, so they couldn't bust through it. Using stocks, on the right, is just more photos of the boarding of the outside of the property. That one photo that I showed you where it was a access hole that allowing the elements of the property, that was boarded up as well, that also prevents vermin from getting in there as, and other type of rodents or animals. We didn't just leave the boarding as it was, just with the wood colored, under the ordinance, we have to paint it the same color as the house, so our contractors went and they found a color that was similar to the color type, so it blends in. And here's just some more evidence and photos of our boarding and the wood boarding's being painted to match the exterior of the property. Here's the photos, again, just of what the property looks like after everything was cleaned up, the cars were removed, some cars were removed voluntarily, I believe there was one car that may have been towed. But that was done through the Ava Program. We hired a three sixty junk removal and hauling as our contractor to perform the work here. The contractor invoice is for three thousand dollars. Administrative costs were in the amount of seven hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Staff is recommending the Board of Supervisors approve a lien amount of three thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, and direct staff to record a lien with the county recorder's office, which then shall be delivered to the auditor's office, which I believe the direct charges are due at the end of this week, so we'll add that to that list, if approved by the board. At this time, that concludes my presentation.
Anything else to add? No? Any comments from Board Supervisor Sabatier?
Who's, who's paying for the plywood?
I'm sorry?
Who's paying for the plywood?
That would be part of the contractor cost.
So.
So that would be the materials and labor included.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open it up for the public. No public here, anyone online? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. For action, it's in my district, so anyone can make the motion if they like.
Move to approve a lien in the amount of three thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office, and after recordation, to be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment rule as special assessments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Next, we have our item six point nine, which is our ten forty-five hearing, consideration of request for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of abatement one one six two five Garden Court, Clear Lake Oaks, APN zero three five two six three dash two seven. Go ahead.
And just for clarification, as far as this, the persons who are sworn in, because this is a separate public hearing item, your board may pose that same question and do the same process for this one?
If there is anyone here to swear in, we'll go ahead and allow this time forward as well. Is there anyone on Zoom, do you see? Okay. Okay, and so they're sworn in, right, so they're good, or do we need to do it again?
Either way, but yeah, just to clarify that the swearing in, those who were sworn in previously also.
Okay.
Apply here.
All right. And then, do we need to? It said Lucerne, but.
Right, yeah, if we could just clarify, there was a typographical error on the staff report, it does say the city of Lucerne, however, this is from Clear Lake Oaks. The street address and the APN, as well as ownership information, remain accurate.
All right, all right. All right, so I'll begin my presentation here for hearing in account for the property one one six two five Garden Court, Clear Lakes, California. Again, we always provide a map, as you can see, it's right there on the lake, down in this area, down here. Property owner information, Richard Waters, we were not able to contact him or determine if he's still living. There was a living property owner, Lisa Walter Waters, Renee Benanzio, I'm, I'm sorry. We did have contact with her, we did give her the notice, she did contact, contact us back acknowledging she did receive the notice, but she had concerns about being able to appear here today, we did inform her she could appear via Zoom or electronically. We did inform her she could appear via Zoom or electronically. I'm not sure if that's occurring here. And I'll let Johanna comment if she does wish to participate. The lot type is R1 single-family district. It was initially improved with multiple structures. There was a fire, so now it's down to a single structure on that property. These are the photos we took of the property here. On the left, you can see various woods and materials and rubbish not stored in compliance. When you are storing items on your property, they have to be maintained out of public view, and you only get a certain amount of area dependent upon the size of your property. On the right are photos of the interior. Again, the doors were left open. These pictures were taken from outside in. She had a exorbitant amount of chickens and roosters on the property, a large amount of chickens and roosters on the property. Animal control was also involved in this. The inside, if you can tell, up in this area on the dresser, was, for lack of a better word, caked with chicken waste throughout the entire structure. So chicken poop all over the interior of the house. Again, you can see on the left, there is a rooster here. There were a lot of exotic type of poultry and livestock on the property. You can see on the right, there were some hoarding issues. Hoarding is a public nuisance. On the left, the picture's not too great, but in the shadow, there are bags of trash lined up here, not properly containerized. On the right, you have inoperable vehicles and large amounts of rubbish and trash not stored properly or properly contained. Here's a picture from an upper unit that shows down on the property, and you can see the disarray and the condition of the property. Here's another photo as well, as you can see, it's in a, it's not, it's in a non-compliance state. Just some more pictures here. Again, on the left, you can see the trash is kind of overflowing, trying to come out the doorway. On the right, you can see another room that's in a form of disarray. That also could be an issue for emergency act egress in case they have to get out or if emergency services have to get in. You have to have an unabated or a clear pathway to a public vantage point. Again, just some more photos reiterating what I've spoken about earlier. And on the left here, you can see piles, I would say, trash and clothes just coming out of a storage area below one of the structures. So we issued a notice of nuisance in order to abate. We cited various violations of chapter thirteen. Also cited violations of the zoning ordinance, chapter twenty one as well. These are the, there was a fire on the property, so we had noticed the property. While the property was going through its correction period, a fire occurred. The fire department was involved. I believe two individuals have been charged with the fire department or by, charged with the crime for the fire that was caused. We did post a red tag on the property. The fire did cause additional violations because trash, rubbish, unhealthy materials, hazardous materials were along the house. We did work with the, we got in contact with the property owner, her insurance company, and we did work with the insurance company, let them come clean up their part of the property, and then we performed our abatement. The property owner did give us access to the property. She did sign a consent of, consent to inspect and right-of-entry permit that allows us to go in and abate it, acknowledging that she'll pay costs. We had concerns about the property owner's capacity. Therefore, we determined that we should get a warrant. And so we went out and obtained a warrant because we just had concerns that she had, didn't have the capacity into, into an agreement and to have full understanding what we were asking for. So we did get a warrant. These are photos of the property after the abatement. As you can see, after the fire, basically all we could do is just go in and clear out the surrounding areas around the structures. The one structure that had the major fire damage, that's where the hoarding was occurring. So the fire took care of the hoarding. The insurance came and took care of the materials that were burnt in the fire. So that reduced our abatement costs. On the right, you can see a truck where it's just being loaded with the materials. The neighbors went to the point, to the extent where they actually were riding on the inoperable vehicles. Code enforcement, please take this, please take that. So this vehicle was take, this vehicle, I do not believe is being charged to the property. We took that under Ava because we could not determine that it was actually on the property. Those Ava funds are not county funds. They come from a state, a state agency or through a state program. We hired Cook Construction to perform the abatement. The cost of the abatement was six thousand four hundred thirty eight dollars. Administrative costs amounted to eight hundred two dollars and thirty cents. We're recommending the Board of Supervisor approve a lien amount of seven thousand two hundred forty dollars and thirty cents and direct staff to record a lien with the recorder's office and then to deliver those costs to the county auditor to be put on the tax rolls. And that concludes my presentation for Garden Court.
All right. Supervisors agree?
Just because you mentioned the capacity issue, is the person with that issue a beneficial owner of this property as defined?
It was Lisa Waters is how we know her. So she signed and allowed us to access the property. But again, hoarding is one indication of a mental health issue. We also had concerns through our interactions with her. We had to routinely deal with her parents to move forward with the property and correct issues on the property. Her parents basically had to step in on her behalf because they didn't feel that she had the ability to work with us as well. So we kind of worked with them as well, so.
So I guess my question, follow-up question might be clearly on the title, but is she a responsible party?
She is a responsible party. She is listed on the grant deed.
Is she a responsible party as evidenced by her behavior? If there are limitations on her capacity, what level of responsibility can be assigned to her?
So I think we get into a thing where it's a little bit out of my scope. I'm not really a person that can determine her mental health capacity, but out of these concerns, we determined, or we felt that it was best to go through a judge, get a warrant, and get authorization through a judge. I'm hoping I'm answering your question appropriately, but I would defer to County Council on this.
Yes, Lloyd, I'm not sure if you heard.
It sounds like there was an additional layer of concern on this, such as they found a good cause to seek a property inspection warrant. And I don't know if that helps us get over the finding or the proposed finding that this is a responsible party. So is the serving of a property inspection warrant sufficient that all the other facts presented here, but with some testimony that there may be some capacity issues? And of course, the, the party's not here to speak to it. As defined in our Lake County Code, a responsible party, is it just the mere fact of property ownership that makes her responsible?
But she's not getting any liens on her. The liens are on the property, and the pictures are proof that there's violations on the property. So I think that's a different subject and a different issue.
Revereering off, but I'll go ahead and give it to County Council to elaborate.
The short answer to that, pending, you know, looking into this further would be, yes, the staff has indicated that they went, they took the additional route of obtaining an inspection warrant under those facts and same facts and circumstances. Inspection warrant was granted to them. And what's before your board today is the recommended imposition of the, or approval of the lien for, for that amount. Not sure if, you know, if notice was provided to any other persons outside of this individual, maybe you can speak to that.
So under the county code, our duties are to post at the property and to mail that the address listed on county records. We met that requirement. Again, Lisa Waters is the only person that we could identify that had a interest in the property. But again, I think now that I understand your question better, legally, she is the responsible party. She is the person on title. Therefore, she is the person that's held accountable and responsible for the condition of the property.
And just as an additional note, I do see that in the notices and in the correspondence to proofs of service, there is also a Richard Waters reference there under that same property address.
I'd like to ask our officer, Code Enforcement Supervisor Norman Valdez. He could comment on this as he was directly involved and he was assigned this investigation.
Come on up, Norman.
Hi there. My name is Norman Valdez with Lake County Code Enforcement. Richard Waters was Lisa Waters' husband. He is deceased, as according to Lisa Waters.
All right, thanks. Any other questions or concerns on that? And I'll open it up to the public. I know there's none, but if there's any online, bring it back for action. Again, this is in my district, but anyone can make this motion for me.
Mr. Chair, I move with the Board of Supervisors to approve a lien on the amount of seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. After recordation, shall be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of lien on the assessment rule as special assessments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one. Okay. And then this next one, is this one fifteen or is it supposed to say eleven fifteen? So it's at one fifteen? Okay, so we'll be coming back at one fifteen for that. We are at twelve fourteen, which I know that we have others, but those are non-timed items aside from this. So maybe do you all feel comfortable taking a lunch from now and then coming right back into this at one fifteen? Yes, yes, okay, I got you. And then, yes, we're good. So we will be back here.
Whatever you say, yes.
So you talk about six point one zero at one fifteen after a lunch break. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you then.
USB out or leaving in there?